We're muted and no video.
Yeah.
Okay, seeing no public comment, we'll move on to the approval of the meeting minutes of November 1st, 2023. Everybody had an opportunity to review them, and if so, can someone please make a motion?
I move we accept the meeting minutes from November 1st, 2023 as written.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I have a second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Okay, motion passes. New business, MSP 23007 Redling Properties LLC Lord's Lane Sketch Plan Review. Is anybody here representing Redling Properties? Okay, well, I'll ask if the board would like to table this.
Yes.
Is there a motion to table?
We have to have a motion. I motion we table it.
Move second. Well, second, all in favor?
Hi.
Okay, table it.
Does it become old business?
It will become old as well. There's going to be kind of plenty of that.
Does it?
Typically, people show up at sketch meetings.
You're like Mr. Roberts rules.
Oh, I don't know. All right, we're not. MSP 22003 San Villa State Preliminary Plan Review. Can you get over to that page?
We're ready for your question here.
Sure.
Come on up.
So, half our engineering, Eliot. This is preliminary plan review. We've been through this quite a bit already. Some concerns were raised at the last meeting, and so wondering if you have any responses to those. And I think the board will give you some further guidance tonight as you move towards final plan. Water issues, have those been resolved? Yeah.
So you'd recently, Ken Wood had made an offer to John Leach via email. This was yesterday on November the 14th, and we'll be back on this guy, I think. It's all good. And you'd made an offer that Carol Mick is agreeable to contributing 50% of the cost of the installation up to a maximum of $100,000. And had asked that John Leach presented to the Board of Directors. At this time, we haven't heard anything back yet, but seeing as it was issued yesterday, that sounds fair. Yep.
So. Okay, I'm willing to go with that, and I think as we move to the final plan process.
Yeah.
If we have no solution, we'll put a condition on that, and I think that's a need to be solution there. Is there any further conversation on that? Okay, so then the next item was the the access. I think is one of the other items that we wanted to talk about tonight, which is what related to this meeting. Is there anything that you want to add or just do that or yes or no?
So I do have things I want to say, but I'm afraid they're not very additive.
Is it repetitive and information that we already have?
Information you already have, not really, but it's on matters.
Does it substantially change your proposal?
It does not, no.
Okay, fine. Then, a couple of things that came up, I want to think, I think we should make sure, you know, on the plan, as we again move towards final plan, the the gate that's listed here, I think, you know, at least in my view, I think you'll see where I'm going to go with this in a minute. I think industry drive should be one of the main access points.
Yeah.
And so, again, there's a gate here on the plan. Yeah, no, I hear that.
Yeah.
Listed as access with enough spots, perhaps I'm wrong, but that's what's called out here.
Yes, so that.
That needs to be corrected as we move forward.
Yes, that will be, we, I believe we had verbally committed to that at the last meeting. We will be taking that off our plans at such time that we issue the final plan set with all of the aforementioned stormwater revisions that we would like to be making.
Okay, so then with that being said, yes, for those consumption for this board and also those that are listening in. We received a couple emails right before the meeting. One of those was from Christie Rabasca. Christie Rabasca is our, here the stormwater consultant in this town. Christie flagged a couple of issues that she felt because of a certain kind of acreage. That because of that, that acreage threshold has been subject to stormwater control. And my understanding is, Eliot, you are aware of this, and these were and will be, and we will expect to see them in the final plan as you move forward. And again, the question where the stormwater management plan should be corrected to reflect the stormwater treatment systems proposed on the drawings. And if any of these stormwater treatment systems will have emergency overflows or discharges to the town's infrastructure, stormwater infrastructure, including ditches. They're subject to chapter 108 post-construction maintenance agreement fees and annual certification. And the HOA documents should reflect this. So that would actually get to one of my points if you go back and review the ordinance says. I think as we move to the final plan, we're going to want to see a draft for our comment and review of what those proposed HOA rules will be. You know, so this board will be requesting those, and I think that would be important for this board to review those. And to point out, I said at the last meeting, you know, we heard some concerns, in particular from Public Works. If you look through the documents that were given to us, particularly on the stormwater management side. And in full disclosure, I think they did say, if my memory is correct, that the HOA would be maintaining that. We want to make sure that that is in there to protect the town moving forward. The maintenance and ongoing maintenance of the stormwater infrastructure, including the detention pond and the yearly required certifications can become quite costly and burdensome. And so we want to make sure that all of that is taken into account in the HOA documents. So my request, with the holidays coming up, I don't really know how quickly you're moving on this in the sense of if we were to say, hey, the final plan, you'll be back next week, right? I would caution you, I know from my perspective, I am going to want to see the HOA documents well in advance of the meeting. And I'm going to ask that the town's attorney review those as well. So the sooner you can get those to us, I think it's going to be a prudent move on your behalf so that we can have them reviewed in any of our information that the ordinance allows us to put in to the documents that we have that opportunity. So if you get that to us in advance, it would be very much appreciated. So that leaves folks, kind of the access road issue. You all understood from the last meeting kind of what I was thinking. I got the sense from the group that that wasn't really going to be well received. So I'm going to make an alternate proposal and understanding that the industry drive is the main entrance point. My proposal for that right of way on the maps, the right of way is another access point. First page here, I have a circle coming from the existing metal pond, including the new, whatever the name road is going to be. Which side note, you really need to think of a different name for that so that there's no further confusion. I would propose that that right of way really be maintained as emergency access only. If this board wants to put the, you know, say, go ahead and pave it, fine. I would suggest, however, that it be paved and only paved with the 12 feet, which is really the necessary width for emergency access vehicles. And that it be posted, no entrance on either side. So it's there for emergency access. And it can be patrolled as such. And again, it is not meant, in my perspective, for through access. The main point of entry would be industry drive. So that would be my proposal on that, the use of that right of way. Reduce it to a 12-foot paved, and generally can be maintained by the HOA for emergency access reasons, and sign no entry on both sides. And I think if we can get over that, we'll, I think with some further conversation, we can probably move this along.
I can agree with that. I think that would make the existing developments happier. And, you know, people can drive it on the industry drive. And that's, and that's that.
Okay.
And I would receive vehicles have access, as long as the fire department says that's okay.
Okay, so here's the next thing that I think is going to be very important to consider. And I'm going to, we're going to try to summarize all of this here.
Sure.
I think that we're going to have, there's been a lot of conversation. And as I just suggested on the HOA thing, I want to see that in advance. I don't want to be presented with it an hour before a meeting. I want it sufficiently in advance that it can be properly reviewed. And I also want to have an opportunity, because I think this affects the town, not only the HOA. I think that should, the HOA should be distributed to the police department, the fire department, the Public Works, to have whatever thoughts they have on that in terms of the HOA documents. I don't think that's too much to ask. However, I also think this plan is changing up to say, before we approve the final plan, I think we ought to take what would be presented to us as a final plan after we get this gentleman further guidance. I do think we may want to ask Public Works in the, in both towns, North Burwick or Burwick, and the police chiefs in each town to take another look at this, and fire departments. I, I, I think that can be accomplished prior to what would be our final one here. I just think it would be prudent for us for them to take another look at this, because, you know, we're saying no, no gate down here. Because the last time we talked with each of those agencies, they were saying, oh, yeah, I think we're fine with this, or we're fine with that. I think we would want to show them what we believe the final plan to be.
Sure.
Yeah, and I just think that's a good move.
You know, I check.
And I would think they would be appreciative of that, but I, I don't know what, if anything, will have to add. But I think that this is a sizable development. We should offer them the opportunity to take a look at it.
Absolutely.
This would be clear, South Burwick and Burwick.
Okay, that's, yeah.
If you, if you want North Burwick, just tell me and I'll add it to the list. I just want to.
Well, so listen. You may want to, board members. Remember, there's a whole nother portion that we're not seeing here.
Yeah, can I, can I just ask, even though it's sort of not in South Burwick, where is this North Burwick project going?
So we actually heard back just this prior week. We were expecting this specifically, but Van Terrell of Main DOT got back to us and has at this time denied our entrance permit on the basis of it being two, two-way entrances, which, as per the main DOT rules on, I'm struggling to remember the exact classification of the road, but on Route 4, because of the 55 mile.
Mobility arterial.
Mobility arterial. Thank you very much. Yes.
Whoa. Basically done.
He's got, and I worked at DOT too. He's, he's really dialed in. But on a mobility arterial with a speed limit of 55 miles per hour, they have a pretty strict rule about you're allowed one singular two-way entrance or two one-way entrances. They did give us the option of trying to apply for a waiver. I can't speak on this for certain, but it is my belief at this time, we will not be pursuing that, and we'll be adjusting our design to likely accommodate to one-way entrances, but.
Okay, but aside from that, which it sounds like you will overcome, how many units are going in?
I believe it is. You remember, yes.
What was that?
Twenty seven.
Twenty seven.
Forty seven, single family housing.
They're not single family houses. They are mobile unit, so.
Nine three-unit buildings.
Nine three-unit buildings.
They're counting.
Gotcha.
Yes.
And is that what's right here on this little picture? Where the, where the $1 million road would have connected to it? Is that what that is?
That is what, that is what it would have connected to, yes.
Did your applications black in front of North Burwick Plan Board?
It is. We are currently, it's, it's currently tabled for preliminary review. They were specifically, they, we had submitted some preliminary, some preliminary plans for them to review, and they chose to table it and wait until they got backward on the, the entrance permit. And they're trying, they were trying to be efficient with all of our time. They didn't want to review anything, knowing that the layout may change, which is understandable, so.
Yeah, so you're kind of, it's up to DOT as to how you move forward now if you want to repropose something to them.
Yeah, I mean, it's, the layout won't change too much. I have a pretty good idea of what things are going to end up looking like, but if there is some redesign that has to be done, yeah.
Now, are they aware of this and the increased loading that this project will have on the Route 4 corridor as well, that being taken into account under trips per day calculations?
I'd have to go back and cross-reference it, but I would assume so, yes.
Is that proposing any changes to, are you required when you meet certain thresholds to initiate some general intersection improvements or turning lanes? Is that anything you have to look at? I think it's Harvey Road.
So.
They didn't have to, so they do.
Nine units, it's a threshold limitation. Once a certain threshold, then they start to require, you got to do this, you got to do that, that kind of stuff.
So this is the first I'm hearing of it, but I have, we have, we have been working on another project in Burwick on Route 4, that where they actually did, where they, there, there was a separate project where they're proposing to make some improvements to Route 4. I haven't heard anything so far about us having tripped a threshold requiring any improvements to the roadway, turning lanes, et cetera. I would have to look into that. Do you have any specific answer on that?
Yeah, hang on. We'll give you an opportunity to.
I was trying to speak specifically to that.
Can you just write it down? Yeah, well, let's. So we don't know what, if any, changes may or may not be required to that instant area of Route 4, or how far out they're going to make you look at the various intersections. We don't know what that means yet. We don't know if they're going to say you need to look at the Harvey Road or Route 4, or Industry Drive and Route 4. We don't know if that's going to force anything downstream.
Yeah, we haven't gotten anything back on any of that yet. For our other Route 4 projects, in that case, it was after we went, we, when we had gone for our traffic movement permit, they came back and had a whole bunch of things to share with us on that, so.
Okay, yeah. All right, so there are some issues. I'm just making sure I'm writing this down to keep track of it.
Okay.
So I don't confuse myself.
Okay.
So we talked briefly, and I'm going to look to the rest of the board for their thought. We talked about the HOA articles. We talked about it in another review by town staff and departments.
Can you clarify what towns?
Yeah, well, I think we do want to, I'm still a little honestly confused about what actually is going on with Burwick. But, you know, we're dumping this development out of Industry Drive. I, I think, I'm not saying we have to base our, our decision on that, but I think it's going to be kind of, oh, just to kind of take another look.
Okay, so is it just Burwick and South Burwick, or did you want to add one, Burwick? I just need to know who you're thinking of too.
I think there's more going on. What?
What, what?
Go ahead.
No, I, I, I don't, I don't, what, what do you think is going on?
No, no, I just think, you know, I don't, again, I don't think anything that varies or shady, let me be clear. I think we're talking now, we had the further conversation about what is actually happening in North Burwick. You know, that's raising some issues that could affect us in terms of the RP permit, in terms of how that affects those intersections.
Okay, but, but we're here now.
Yeah.
He's before DOT still. Let them deal with it. That's for them to deal with, not on our plate. I, I'm not willing to take that on. I, I feel like they've come before us. They have met the requirements. There are a few outstanding issues.
What's the chief's name in North Burwick?
The chief of what?
You know, it's funny, I don't know. Chief of Fire or PD?
No, never mind. I think we can get away with this, Burwick and South Burwick.
Burwick is chief then, so without you asking.
I mean, I honestly, I don't think anyone's thrilled about the drive, but I don't lose it at this point. So I suspect it will be hard to sell these, but then again, I'm.
So, so a review by, by town departments in, in, in Burwick and South Burwick, primarily police, fire, and DPW. Just to have a final look, make sure they're understanding what we're getting ready to approve. That's what I'm looking for.
Well, I'm not.
Make sure they have no other.
I'm not sure whether, I mean, the fire department has vested interest in vehicle.
Because they offered some comments before. I think we should, I think we should offer them an opportunity.
I think that's fine. It's fine to discuss.
And so the right of way would be a paid 12-foot right of way with no entrance signed at each end. And that water issue is yet to be resolved. That would be resolved in the final plan, and that would be a condition or not, if this is all.
Yeah, so water review by departments and that right, what is it, 50 feet?
The right of way.
50 feet right of way, yeah, will be paved, limited to one.
12 foot.
Yeah, to whatever, whatever the fire department designated, but I would say, I don't really know what width they need for their vehicles.
Yeah.
Or DPW for that matter, they might say, you know.
We'll have to confirm specifically with the chief gamble.
Right, and, and that it's for emergency access only. And, you know, if everybody becomes friends and decides that needs to change, they can change it.
Yeah.
And so, can you just say, can you just say one more time? It's okay, limited access, and then what did you say? I missed your note.
Oh, I, I just said if, if, you know, all the residents decide that's a pain in the butt and become friends and want to travel between developments, they can change their sets on them.
That's on the HOAs.
And the, right, the HO.
Yeah, the HOAs. And then the town, whether or not the town wants to make a public road, that's up to them.
Right, and there, and there will be. There are sidewalks.
And so, did this gentleman receive that memo from the town?
Yes.
Okay, so you're aware that enter at your own risk, so to speak.
I was handed that memo when I walked in today.
Okay, so review and consider. Good. Yeah, review and consider that, but, you know, I think it's important for you to have that. I think this board is going to say no sidewalks at this point. But recognize that if you do go down that road, the town is making a generalized statement that that, they're not really in favor of that. So that's up to between you and the council, and when the developer moves forward.
And, and this, this is future. We require sidewalks, and we're going to approve sidewalks and sidewalks to be in the project.
We have them on our plans for.
Yes, I know you do. I'm just saying, no matter what our town manager says, there are going to be sidewalks.
Right, but what I'm saying is, I think there's other logistical issues.
I got you.
And that's, that's between you and the town at that point.
And then the town, swing around the way. Good.
So, okay, we got, again, so I'll just review here, the HOA articles, we want to see those, review by town departments, police, fire, and DPW, including Burwick, just really the industry drive aspect. That will probably end up being a condition on our thing, because I, unless we know if it's been approved, I don't really recall where that is. The right of way, paid 12-foot for designated by the fire chief. The entrances, go through traffic, the water issue, what else do we have?
So when Burwick was here, if I may, they.
Yeah, they put it to the.
No, no, no.
I think there's more to it.
But hold on, so this has nothing to do with that. When Burwick was here, they talked about, when they, if you go back to the meeting where we were doing their approvals, they mentioned something about an amendment to a DOT permit that they already have. So we should also have them look into that and see if that's something they need to do as part of their San Villa as well. I'm not sure, but I do remember them saying that, so it is, it is on our list.
That's why I'm saying, I think that, that's why I was talking about the DOT permit. I think there's more to it than just saying right here. There's, it's the ancillary effects of when they do this. The permitting process and the number of runs that they do, so that now you have to go out here and do this, that, and the other thing, which would impact what we're doing here. That's what I'm saying. So I think we do need to see some further information from DOT on what that amendment would look like based on the, the approval of what you're asking us to approve.
Gotcha.
And it could be all set, or we just don't.
Yeah, maybe it is, right, yeah. I just, I don't, I don't, I don't know. But we owe it to the town to look into that. I mean, other than that, if no one's got anything else, you know, I would be ready to move this along.
Well, I think.
Yeah, we'll hear more, yeah, we'll hear more. I just.
No, I'm.
Board members first.
I'm good. You said it all.
No, I think you toward.
Why? Wonderful. So I have, I have Tom from Oracle Law here, and he has some, some things to say specifically regarding our stance on the needs of access.
Perfect.
Sure, thank you.
Thank you very much. Tom Fader. On the HOA issue, absolutely. We'll get that to you, you know, well in advance. You have plenty of time to review it, plenty of time for your town attorney to review it with regards to. With regards to further departmental review of both towns, absolutely, that, that makes perfect sense to us. With regards to changing the access road, that's not our application, that's before you. What we're hoping for tonight is is action on the application as we have it before you, moving from preliminary plan to final plan. You put forward an alternative that may make sense, but it's not what we are putting before you and, and seeking action on. We believe that what we've put before you is consistent with Phase one that was approved, with Phase two of the subdivision as approved. It was fully noticed on those plans that this was being reserved for this purpose. We're now doing it. If anyone on the board feels that that is inconsistent with your subdivision ordinance, we'd like you to cite where that is inconsistent. So, while it's an interesting alternative, and I think other alternatives have been discussed, at the end of the day, we're here as the applicant, asking you to vote on our plan, and our plan is to use that not as a 12-foot wide emergency-only accessway, but to use it as the main accessway. I mean, one way to think of it is once we develop this, there're gonna be homes in there and children in there going to your schools, and their, the school buses would now have to drive around into another town to come in from a different way. It just doesn't make sense to us. It's not the proposal that we've put in front of you, and so what we're asking is for you to vote on the proposal that we've put in front of you.
So, I, I'm sorry, let me just, I'm not exactly clear here, so what you're saying is, you want that to be the main access point?
We want to have two access points that are both accessible. We don't wanna limit the one access point to just emergency vehicle, just 12 feet wide. We wanna build it out as we propose.
Okay, but isn't there, and you could go beyond the requirement, I guess, but the requirement is that we have two points really because one is for emergency access. And that's why there's two, right?
Yeah, I think from a life safety perspective, it's better to have two than one. But we don't want either one to be limited, but most importantly, we don't want the accessway from Phase two into Phase three to be limited to an emergency only. So, I, we understand that neighbors have raised that concern again and again, and we've been at this for a long time, and we're not gonna change their opinion on that, but nonetheless, we're governed by what your ordinances say. And so, we're sticking to our guns, that this is the better plan, this is the plan that, uh, that we're putting before you and asking you to vote on.
And, and you know, maybe when we began this, it would have been a, a better time to have this discussion, but it seems that we've relied on the fact that Industry Drive was really sort of touted as the main entrance, and, and accepting that, even though we don't think it's perfect, or I'll speak for me, I don't think it's perfect, um, sort of colored my view of what to do about this access road, and actually, I hate to say it, I, I'm not concerned about the other people who live in that development. I, not that I don't feel for them, but it is a public road, right?
Our, our development is public road, yeah.
Public road, people get to use it. I just think, um, it's gonna push everyone to using it, and that no one will use Industry Drive, and in that sense, it will become useless as a second-floor entrance, and, and that doesn't seem right to me either.
So, you know, fellow board members, I would point out in our ordinance that it actually does not define what an access point is, doesn't set typical standards for it. So I would suggest that what we discussed here is what we advance. And, you know, we can always engage the town attorney to make sure that we are within the confines of our interpretations of the ordinances.
Mr. Chair.
When I get to the final plan.
The only thing I would say, Mr. Chair, is that you're, you're advancing your plan and, and acting on your plan, and our, our plan that's before you would have a, a, a main accessway from Phase two of the subdivision. So if that doesn't meet your ordinance, we want you to tell us that.
And I think we will. I understand you're requesting it, and so what we'll do is, I think if we ask our attorney to confirm whether or not the desire of this board is within the confines of those ordinances, if the answer is no, we'll have to come back and talk about it. If the answer is yes, then the decision's made.
Okay. So you're thinking.
But we'll have time to make that decision during and prior to the final plan. We'll hopefully have that answer before the final.
Yeah, okay, that makes sense.
We'll communicate that to you.
And, and, okay, fair enough, and I think advancing it to final plan review makes sense, even if it's with a large footnote that our plan and our application is different from what you seem to be suggesting.
Well, I see it as nothing different than the condition, you know, which the ordinances really allow us to do. You know, and I think if you research the totality of the ordinances and look at it, you'll understand that it also allows us to make determinations that we think are in the best interest of the town as well.
Yeah.
And I believe that that wording is in there. So, what I would encourage this board to do is to go along with what we said, advance that, say, this is what we want you to produce on the final plan. If you wanna put a footnote in there, fine, whatever, but in the final plan, if we're not satisfied with that, we'll put conditions to ensure that what we're asking for will be complied with. And so those will be shared with our attorney.
Yeah.
And our attorney can then tell us whether or not what we're suggesting complies with the ordinance.
Yeah.
And if the attorney tells us, no, it doesn't, then we have time to correct that.
That, that's fair.
Before the final approval.
That's fair, and our, in our final
Yeah.
point is just simply, it's a public road, and we, we wanna access it the way we wanna access.
Understood, but I also believe that what's not resolved here, and I think you need to give some further consideration to, is whether or not the town will actually, not for this board to determine whether or not the town wants that to be a public road, or maintain it as a private road.
Yep, we understand that.
That's a big issue there, that the developer is gonna have to consider moving forward, not for this board to decide.
Right.
But something that you need to think about moving forward.
Yep.
So, anything further?
Uh, no.
Okay, thank you very much. Yes, Jenny.
Can I just say one thing?
Yeah, go ahead.
There's also, so if this board sees our final plan and accepts it, and everything's good, don't forget there's an appeal process that you guys can follow too. Bring it to the zoning board of appeals and have it, try to have that changed at that time if you need to. That's why we have that board.
Y- yes, I, I understand that, and by the time we get to a final action on the final plan, that would be the appealable event.
Yeah.
Yes.
Um, we may be back here again, asking you to vote on the application that we are putting in front of you that includes having an accessway from Phase two of the subdivision, because that is what we're asking for, and it seems.
And you're asking us to quote to you, uh, the, the chapter and verse of why we're denying your portion of the application.
If, if in fact, that's what you do.
So you can take that to, to the zoning board, say, chapter 135.2 says this, what's the interpretation? I think that might be a misinterpretation on your behalf, because I think this board has the ability to make uh, conditions of approval.
Yeah.
And I think the ordinances would support that particular approach. So I think what you're asking for us is to take a different approach and technically work in your favor. Uh, and so, again, I think the issue here is, let's advance this, and I think we can easily engage the town attorney to help us understand whether or not what we're requesting here is within the confines of our, so I think we're well-suited to do that.
Fair, and to be clear, I mean, our goal is to get to an approval with this board. Our goal isn't to get to a point where we can appeal this board, we'd much rather.
And I don't fault you for doing that at all. I understand who you're here, what you're representing together.
Yep.
And I don't fault you.
Yep.
So, I think we have a clear path at this point, uh, for moving forward. Jenny, anything else that you wanted to add? Okay.
Thank you.
Yep. Any further conversation on this, Tony?
Thank you, sir. And thanks, everybody, uh, for the opportunity. I just wanted to address a couple of statements that were just recently made by the previous gentleman. A couple of things, you know, he.
Please take the record name again.
Oh, Seth, sorry. Tony Palazzetti, Six Whittail Drive, President, uh, Homeowners, Homeowners Association of Meadow Pond. Um, the gentleman says that the original applicant, or application, the original plan was for two accesses. If the board recalls, the original plan, and it's still drawn on the plan, has a gated knockbox on Industry Drive, and it was this board that determined that Industry Drive should be the primary access to this, and that we weren't gonna use that knockbox, so the, the plan has already changed, and now we're hearing that they really want Meadow Pond to be the primary access. That's been what they wanted from the beginning, so to that extent, it's true, but the plan has adjusted. Okay, uh, the second thing, talked, and this has been raised before, having a school bus have to leave South Burwick into another town to get the kids into school. I talked to the transportation department. There are many routes in this town that do exactly that today. My kids used to drive from our property through, uh, North Burwick, Burwick, and into South Burwick to go to school on the school bus, so that's nothing new, it happens all over the town, so it's just, it's out there. Couple of things, it was mentioned earlier about the DOT, and, you know, improvements that may or may not have to be made on Route four because of some of this traffic impact of both these potential developments. I will tell you, if you go back and look at the Phase one and two approvals for Meadow Pond Estates, there was a provision that there was to be a 300-foot stretch of an eight-foot widening on the southern side of Route four in the vicinity of Harvey Road. So right at the top of the hill there, there was supposed to be a 300-foot long, eight-foot wide additional, uh, uh, breakdown lane, if you will, provided, and that was part of the original Phase one and Phase two plan, so for 18 homes, they were looking at that as necessary because of the traffic impact on the floor, so I just wanna make sure you guys are aware of that. Lastly, two points I wanna make. Uh, first of all, you know, I've been here a lot, I, I've listened to you guys a lot, I appreciate, you know, the thoughtful, uh, analysis that you guys have all put into this. Um, I am very appreciative of the accommodations that we're looking at potentially as far as the access to Meadow Pond. Uh, the homeowners of Meadow Pond would be ecstatic. Okay, and if there's anything we can do to assist, you know, in terms of, you know, we don't have a plant or a, uh, a snow plowing contract right now, because the town takes care of the public roads, you know, in our development. If that's something that we wanted or needed to cost share, or even provide all of the, the clearing for that snow, uh, on that emergency right-of-way, we'd be willing to take that on, okay? It's, it's that important to us. And then, lastly, and I don't wanna look the proverbial git horse in the mouth, uh, but a lot of the conditions we asked for, and, and our correspondence with the board, would be negated by this emergency access only. A lot of what we'd asked for, for safety concerns, would be mitigated by that, so we really appreciate that. And I only ask that, you know, if we'd have an opportunity to maybe look at something along the lines of the curb cuts as well, to access that, because if we can make it so that it's not you know, pleasant, or anything other than emergency vehicle to go walk over a curb to get into that road, it may also mitigate some of the traffic, if people just trying to joyride through there, so that's not an issue for now, but it may be something we can ask you to, you know, further work that down the road, if, if the emergency access only goes forward, but again, I don't wanna look the git horse in the mouth, I really appreciate where you guys are now. I know it's not final, I know things could change, but I appreciate that you've listened.
Thank you, Jenny. Uh, I'm good. Any board member wants to comment on? Are we good? Do we wanna go over the list of issues?
Can I run them down? Can you run them down?
Jen, can I, can I ask you, and maybe Hannah?
Sure.
What do we wanna do? How does the MDOT permitting process impact what we are or are not doing? And, and I know that's a broad question. I'm, I'm, I'm familiar with the DOT permitting process, and understand through my own experiences how far out they may do go with various improvements. And we have expressed some concern going back far, you know, exiting on and off Route four, whether it be on Harvey Road or Industry Drive. I guess what I'm saying is, are we gonna approve something that? Did you guys do an MDOT permit for this? Would, did that go through the analysis even? Did it meet the threshold, do you know?
I don't know off the top of my head, no. Uh, the threshold for?
Well, usually if it meets a certain number of trips per day, the traffic study, then it would trigger the permitting process through DOT, and I honestly don't, it's been a long time. I don't really remember where that ended.
I was not even here at these meetings at that time.
So, I used to work for Burwick, we all know that. Um, I'm 100% sure, 99.9% sure, that they have a main DOT permit for Industry Drive right now, that needs to be amended for the subdivision, and it came up at at least one, if not two, meetings, so that's something that I would encourage Wyatt just to look into, and see what, if you have anything further for that, that needs to happen.
So, Jenny, Jenny, would that just be a condition on our?
It would be a condition.
Okay, I'm fine with that.
Yep.
Okay. Just to be extra clear, and this condition is that we verify that.
We come up to the podium just for transparency for them, you know?
So just to be clear, that this is a request that we revisit our DOT permit, and make sure it's amended if necessary to reflect.
Well, I mean, yeah, 'cause what we're telling you is, you're basically going in and out of Industry Drive, and allegedly, that's already been worked out, uh, with the town, town's approved it, you're okay with it, uh, for prior conversations. I just wanna make sure that we're not gonna, I'm happy to, to approve it, and with the things that we have just said.
Yes, sir.
I just don't wanna put us at a disadvantage by approving it, and then saying somehow that we should have looked further somehow at the DOT, so as long as we can put a condition on that.
You can. Check with Ken, because I'm pretty sure it's already done, and it was already looked into, and it was decided that there was no amendment that needed to be made, but let's get, let's revisit that to be sure.
I believe that is the case. I didn't want to say so earlier, I don't wanna.
And, and again, I wanna be clear, I don't think that's going to affect the subdivision that you proposed, that, that would just be Route four adjustments, that the DOT would tell you, you have to do, not us.
Yeah.
But I just wanna make sure that with this and the North Burwick portion that's being talked about, that is being thought about all together. And again, the DOT will tell them what they actually do, not us. I just wanna make sure that this is actually included in that.
But it, it could definitely be in the condition of, anyway, that they would have to give them their DOT if you're not on it.
I made the motion that we accept preliminary.
Based with those conditions that you had talked about?
Well, they're just gonna carry over to when we get to final, so there's, we're, they're not, they're open issues that we're still grappling with.
Yeah.
That, you know.
Right, so the, what, what you're saying is the final plan should reflect those changes that we're requesting.
They need to be resolved. I mean, some should be resolved before we do final, but, you know, we're in the middle here, so we just need to get half free then, so I moved that we accept as preliminary and move ahead.
I second. Good move, seconded. Any further conversation? Okay, go, go ahead.
Nope, vote first. Then I wanna say something, go ahead.
Do you have a caution for us?
I wanna just talk, I just wanna revisit something, did you guys?
I didn't ask, call for it yet.
Okay, I just wanna.
Seconded for conversation.
I just wanna revisit and kinda go back to what you said, it's in my notes, that, um, the HOA documents are gonna go in front of the attorney before final plan, right? And I just want Wyatt to know that I'm gonna send an email to you and Ken and Sammy about this, so I'm gonna take notes and do it. Um, and also that the applicant is aware that you said that these final plans and things are gonna go to both towns' public works department, both towns' fire departments, and both towns' police departments, so these, um, departments need time to review this, so I don't know if you wanna set a date for like, hey, we're gonna give them 14 days to review, 10 days to review, something like that, so the applicant is aware on what we're going to do, because these departments, you can't give them a plan and expect that they're gonna turn it right around. That's all I wanna say.
Yeah, I would hope that the departments would get it and act on it, and not sit on it, but I agree, I think that we need this sooner, we don't wanna be, you know, getting at a the Wednesday before our next Wednesday meeting, there needs to be adequate time to review this. I think you understand.
Sure.
Yes, and I think that's a fair, and I, and I would hope that we take that into account if the next round of meetings come up with all the holidays, the whole nutty yards, 'cause it's gonna start getting tough, at least during December, I can tell you that.
Yeah, it, I mean, it's our intent to get you the HOA draft as soon as we possibly can, and I certainly, I certainly intend, we certainly intend to give you as much time as is necessary to review that.
Thank you.
Um, I do want to also, because this does have a bearing on when exactly all of that happens, because we wanna make sure all the due diligence is done. Um, you had expressed that you wanted a, I can't remember the exact wording, something to the effect of you want the, a final, or something close to the final plan to go with these, uh, these HOA drafts to.
Well, my preference would be that. Well, my preference would be that, you know, every agency looking at these would be able to understand, say, hey, you looked at this over a year ago. It's changed a little bit. Can you just take another glance at it? The planning board has made the following changes, whether you agree with them or not, asking right now. But incorporate those changes that we suggested so that they can then look at. And then I hope that they would either say yay, everything's great, or oh my gosh, you did something wrong, can't do it. I just think this is a significant development that they should be afforded another opportunity just to take a look at it. Since they're the ones, at the end of the day, we initiate the approval, we're done. But they're the ones that are going to have to live with whatever decision made. I just would like them to suggest that the, there is a big issue that we're missing.
Yeah, yeah, that that makes perfect sense to me, but am I understanding right that you would like these plans that go to the police, fire and DPW for the two towns to be reflecting all the changes that the board had requested as opposed?
My intent.
Okay.
Whether or not you agree is another thing, but I think that's what should go to them.
Well, what the, the reason I'm
Yeah.
I feel I'm sounding a little dodgy here is I
You do, yeah.
Yeah, I'm trying, I'm just trying to make sure that we're not, you know, being obligated to submit a plan that doesn't reflect what we're currently proposing as far as agreeing and or disagreeing, you know.
You don't have to agree with it, but.
So we're going to have all the answers to our questions. I'm going to submit that question to our town attorney tomorrow, if you guys want.
Yeah.
And we're going to have all the answers that we need going forward, and if the board agrees, I will send the answer
Yes.
to the applicant, so that they know what direction to go with with the final plan, and I will also alert the board on the attorney's answer as well. So that they know what they're up against.
You're not waiting, we're not playing the chicken game, you know.
Yes, that's.
We're happy to keep it going.
That's perfect. Thank you both, yeah.
And I think if we can get all of that done, and if you could make the changes, so to speak, and the attorneys hasn't red flagged anything, you could probably be looking at the approval sometime in December. I think that could be done. Uh, where were we?
We were voting.
Were they calling the vote? Okay, so uh, all in favor? Uh, okay, very good. You can move the final plan. What? Yeah, it's a unanimous.
I moved to adjourn.
No.
So let's just have the conversation now. The December is coming. Um, it, what are, what are folks doing? Then we have a meeting on December sixth. We have a meeting on December sixth, and then the second one would be on December twentieth. Do people want to have the December twentieth meeting or is, does anybody?
I'll be here.
I'll be a goer.
I'll be here, but I'm not going to cry. There's nothing to uh, meet on.
I would suggest the same thought. If there's nothing to meet on, we'll cancel.
Or something minor that could get pushed. Okay, maybe we make that decision on the fly.
Agreed. Okay, so there you go.
So what are we meeting?
We're going to, yeah, we're going to, we're going to fight, we're going to take the twentieth as a, let's see how it goes.
And we'll vote next.
If there's nothing that's showing up or anything minor.
Real lunatic, fast and loose with the cancellation.
Yeah. If it, if there's nothing major, we're happy to post vote.
All the thing is, standing for these as you did, and.
Yeah, I get it. Yeah, I get it. Well, we celebrate votes.